City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Win.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Ravel.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, March 13th, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First item on the agenda is the mayor's public announcements, and I have two. One is that the post office is now the Abner Mikvah Post Office. There was a wonderful ceremony this morning, and it is officially named. Second is that the mayor's summer youth employment program had 863 students come.
Yeah.
That's a 26 percent increase over 2016, and the number of available jobs was indeed 1,000. The participants by ward are first ward 1 percent. I think you have more jobs, Judy, than you have students looking for jobs. Second ward, 20 percent. Third ward, 5 percent. Fourth ward, 7 percent. Fifth ward, 18 percent. Sixth ward, 9 percent. Seventh ward, 8 percent. Eighth ward, 17 percent. And ninth ward, 15 percent. And we had absolutely wonderful, terrific, marvelous young people applying for these jobs. That concludes my report. City manager, do you have a report?
Yes, ma'am mayor. Good evening. Very happy to report that Northwestern University has made the NCAA men's basketball tournament for the first time. We...
Oh, and the high school. All right. Don't forget.
Don't forget them. And the Evanston Township High School boys' basketball team continues their drive for a state championship, and they are ranked number one in the state currently, and will continue to play over the next two weeks. But we wanted to do something a little different with the announcement with Northwestern if they did indeed make the tournament. Jennifer Lasek, our cultural arts coordinator, is here, and I'd like to ask her to talk a little bit about the event we did last night, plus plans that we have. We were able to get shirts for all of you. Some of you are wearing them. Thank you. We also got a basketball, which the mayor is going to take with her to Salt Lake and present to the team at the first-round game versus Vanderbilt on Thursday. So we'll... We still need some more signatures from members of the council, so once Jennifer's done with her presentation, maybe we'll get the marker, and we'll pass that around.
Good evening, Mayor Tisdale, Clerk Green, City Manager Bob Kowitz, and members of the city council. So City Manager Bob Kowitz asked me to do this easy little project where we got community arts things going on throughout the city for NU, but of course, we couldn't talk about it because of bad luck. So it was kind of a challenge to figure out how we organize a citywide thing, and don't tell anybody about it. Fortunately, we have a Cracker Jack community engagement team here, and they're really well-versed on social media. So we arranged with several venues to... I believe Alderman Wilson, you have one of those mini balls handy. We arranged with about half a dozen venues on Sunday night to be ready... at the ready when the announcement was made, and we made sure that each of them had 25 to 50 of those mini balls and lots of art supplies. So as soon as the announcement was made by the selection committee, those venues pulled them out and had a very celebratory... We sent out on social media that you could go to any of those places, and so people were at different venues throughout the city decorating balls to honor and to congratulate Northwestern. In addition, well, we had for today a chalk thing planned, but the weather did not cooperate, so hopefully towards the end of the week, we'll be able to do that. We also have probably either tomorrow afternoon or more likely Wednesday morning, again with the weather, two 10-by-10 basketball photo backdrops that are going to go up, and we're going to allow people to take selfies and photographs in front of them. They have... We'll have the Northwestern, and they can hashtag "It's Time," and they'll be able to share in the celebration and keep those. And then in addition, our community engagement made posters. We didn't want to forget our Wild Kits and how well they're doing, and so these posters are going out to dozens and dozens of merchants and establishments across the city, and they'll be displaying them in their window to congratulate the kits and the cats. So just...
We are also planning watch parties. The game will be on TBS on Thursday at 3:30, so I think we'll make an announcement tomorrow as to where there'll be televisions available for folks who don't have cable, who would like to watch the game. We're also in touch with Evanston Township High School, of course. The next... They've got one more game, and then they go to the state finals in Peoria. Those games will also be televised, and so we're going to work with ETHS to... If they would like to do something on their campus grade, if not, we'll do something so that people who, again, don't have access to cable will be able to watch those.
And, ma'am mayor, I just wanted to tell you, too, that we organized this through our SSAs and merchant associations, and they were fantastic. Downtown Evanston, Main dumpster miles, Central Street, they all worked together to get the word out and kind of plan it. And then I also wanted to just give a shout-out to Maureen Palczek, who's with the athletic department at Northwestern University, who was just excellent to work with and really super excited that we wanted to be part of the excitement, and she was extremely helpful and committed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Shifting gears a little bit, ma'am mayor, members of the council, Katie Knapp, our transportation mobility coordinators here. Katie's been working diligently over the last several months on a great grant that I think you're all aware of, but she wanted to come this evening and give an update on our work on that. Katie, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am mayor, members of the city council, City Manager Bob Kowitz, and City Clerk Green. I'm Katie Knapp, Transportation Mobility Coordinator, and this evening, I'm pleased to provide an update on the city's ongoing Transit Planning for All program. See, I believe you just need to press the arrow. There we go. Perfect. Evanston was selected in June of 2016 along with southern other communities through a competitive grant process, which received over 50 applications from communities nationwide. The Transit Planning for All grant provides over $85,000 for planning initiatives focused on serving and including older adults and people with disabilities. The project is assisting staff in embedding inclusionary planning practices into their work. Such practices include scheduling meetings at partner-owned or shared spaces, providing meeting materials in a variety of formats, and providing opportunities for participants to serve as decision-makers on project planning and deliverable development. The project's deliverables include the identification of transit barriers experienced by older adults and people with disabilities, and a list of recommendations for closing and/or bridging those barriers. Next slide, please. So in walking through the project's timeline, the work began in early fall of 2016 with the formation of the project's design team. The design team includes over 20 representatives from partner organizations and individuals who identify as an older adult and/or a person with a disability. The design team developed the project's work plan and discussed emerging on-demand transportation trends and pilot programs that we've seen popping up over the past years in communities such as Bossam, Massachusetts, Centennial, Colorado, and Summit, New Jersey. Next slide, please. During the winter, the five... There were five focus group meetings and participant interviews, which were held at Over the Rainbow, North Shore Villages, The Marion, Housing Options, and Shore Community Services. In addition to learning about participants' experiences in accessing transit resources here in Evanston, participants reviewed and provided feedback on draft iterations of the then-developing community survey. And I am pleased to share that the backbone of the survey was designed by one of our participant members of the design team. Next slide, please. Now, here we are in spring... Well, I thought we were here in spring. And we are launching the community-wide survey. As data is collected, the design team will work through the many stories and data points provided by the survey respondents to identify the barriers, trends, and possible solutions. Next slide, please. These identified trends and recommendation solutions will be included in a report that will be released in mid-2017, which aligns with the close of the grant. Next slide, please. This survey, which is opening today, is available online at tinyurl.com/evanstontpall. The survey will close at the end of the month. Printed copies are available at the Levy and Civic Centers, as well as partner locations, as well as by request by emailing tpforall@cityofevanston.org or by contacting 311. And I would like to thank again the residents and building staff at Jacob Blake Manor, Pearlman Apartments, Prim Towers, and Walltrick Apartments for welcoming us into their spaces two weeks ago. During these meetings, staff had the opportunity to learn about residents' transit experience and hand-deliver over 400 mail-back-ready printed copies of the survey, with came-ready with a labeled envelope, as well as a return stamp. And to close, I would like to... You'll see on the screen here a list of the organizations that our fantastic partners and participants come from. I would like to personally thank again these partners and participants for their ongoing support of the Transit Planning for All project. Thank you.
Unless there's any questions, ma'am mayor, that concludes our report.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, do you have communications for us?
No communications this evening, ma'am mayor.
All right. Next on the agenda is public comment. I'm going to call the first four names. You each have three minutes. Please come up in the order in which your name is called, and you're welcome. Mike Vasilko, Junad Riske, Heather Sweeney, and Stephanie Tet... I'm sorry, Stephanie. Stephanie Tetrazz... You know who you are.
Thank you, ma'am mayor. Alderman Rainey's behavior and her making disparaging remarks against me...
Please, let's not get personal in this.
You were not at the AP&amp;W meeting, where Alderman Rainey was very personal. So I...
Well, I'm here now, so let's try not to.
Okay. I'll try not to, but she misunderstood what I was saying when I suggested that she had contact with city staff during the period of review for RFP 1707. She thought I was talking about RFP 1707. I was not. I was talking about the 2016 RFP, also for the architectural and engineering services, where I know for a fact. So I was speaking on fact, and some of the things she said were very personal and, quite frankly, unbecoming an elected official. But I'm here tonight asking that the council withdraw item A3.13 from the consent agenda and actually hold that item for discussion until after an independent review takes place on the entire Howard Street Theater project from start to finish. There's a lot that went on that should be shown. The council should not continue to enable repeated bad behavior in a ward. Enabling bad behavior reflects badly on the entire council. The council should not enable staff to continue to be subjective when it's awarding contracts. Evanston needs an independent watchdog person, someone the public can trust. Regarding RFP 1707, I do have, to use my firm... The scoring of my firm as an example. I had a cordial meeting or conversation, I should say, with the mayor last week, had a cordial conversation with the city manager today. He explained the reason... One of the reasons my firm was scored with a zero, which I got a check lot of for MBWBE was because I did not use my firm's Evanston address well in my proposal. My cover letter and every page throughout the entire proposal had my Evanston home office address and my city address. So if that were the criteria for a zero, then there was something flawed in the analysis. But that's just one example of the bias that was created, I think, after the fact when last year I, you know, kind of blew the whistle on this $40,000 lie that the city staff came forward to with the council in 2016. So there's a lot that went into these, I think, very subjective scoring processes. I think that's the bigger point tonight, not my firm or its scoring. The city should reevaluate the scoring process. It's all very subjective. It can be manipulated by staff so that the outcome is predetermined, and, in my opinion, that's what happened with RFP 1707. Thank you.
Thank you.
I somewhat agree with what the last speaker said in terms of manipulations of bids here. I've seen that over quite a period of time, but I don't have time to get into that tonight. Some time ago, I raised a question about the conflict of interest of a former council member and as on an item on the agenda and how it would benefit her employer. At the time, the city law department claimed it was fine. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of respect for our law department because of what's gone on with the James Park lawsuit and over $2 million wasting taxpayer money. I think it's time the council clarified some of the ethics problems here. It's my understanding one candidate running for mayor is a director of First Bank. First Bank is the bank of the city. A director has a greater financial role to protect the financial interest of a bank than the typical employee. I guess I see a problem in that, which might be coming if he's elected mayor. Of course, you can't serve both a bank and the city council. Will we have an ethics board problem at this time? I suggest the council at this time, though, start to ask staff to review the relationship with First Bank, depending on the outcome of the election and the possible decisions after the election. On another matter, I will speak on the Howard Street Theater tonight. Alderman Rainey tabled Harley Clark waiting for the outcome of the state budget crisis. I suggest tonight, given some of the problems Mr. Vasilko basically said about the bleak and this mess, that this get tabled after the election, when maybe a potentially another alderman may be in charge and running in that ward. And basically, I think it's time this council, there are serious problems with what Mr. Vasilko's saying, but there are other problems. This thing, again, is not financially justified. And frankly, it's just wasting money, and I'm sick of what's gone on here about Harley Clark's claiming there's no money for Harley Clark, but there's money to give away to a theater group from Chicago. Basically, there's plenty of money. There's never a problem. Plus, the bid's 30 percent higher. You gave it to this other bidder. So there's plenty of money here, isn't there? Now I'll move on. Let's talk about the water contract with Skokie. I find it very interesting, after probably going over three years of telling this council, you better start to look at what's going on with this water business and figure it out, because it looks like to me you're headed to court with Skokie. So when they go to court, they're going to ask you why you're justifying all these payments. Well, I've told you for years, the Evanston residents are overpaying for Skokie. We're paying... We're basically paying the capital cost of Skokie. That was written in the memo, by the way. It was hidden in the way it was written, but it was written there. So, you know, I think it'll be interesting. It just sounds like the James Park lawsuit again. Another mess, another problem. Because what we lack here is integrity, which I see on the poster every time I come in. We lack transparency, and really, we have just a plain operational problem here, as Mr. Zivokel has pointed out with how the city runs. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am troubled that the city of Evanston uses tax dollars to advertise on Evanston Now. This publication has a long practice of divisive reporting and publishing racist comments. This reporting contributes to a narrative in our community that reinforces stereotypes and divisions. That you're... The city advertising on Evanston Now is counter to your efforts to be inclusive and equitable. It's counter to your work to heal divisions that exist between marginalized and non-marginalized groups in Evanston. Your advertising is not in line with serving all of Evanston residents or with the shared values of inclusivity and unity that we hold here in Evanston. Instead, this advertising on this source sends a message of acceptance for this divisive reporting. I hope that losing advertisers will encourage Evanston Now writers to examine their reporting and their policies in a way that they have not yet done. Broadening the beliefs and values that inform this kind of reporting can happen only when deliberate and intentional efforts are made. Cutting off advertising dollars asserts pressure on Evanston Now. It asserts pressure to do this necessary examination, and cutting off advertising dollars is not a threat to free speech. I want to name three examples of this reporting, though there are more. Evanston Now allows racist comments that disregard the worth and value of residents. Comments like, "We don't need to import dangerous losers from elsewhere. We grow our own right here." And "Our scumbags are locally sourced." I would venture to say that among those who are being referred to here are those residents the city spends resources... I'm sorry. ...reaching out to through city programs, including the highly-lotted mayor's summer employment youth program. The city doesn't disregard these residents in this way. Why would you advertise in a source that prints rhetoric that does? Secondly, Evanston Now feeds stereotypes by portraying black men as criminals. When Devon Reed was illegally arrested, Evanston Now published an article declaring that he was no stranger to arrest, when in fact, one charge was for an offense that was the result of an unpaid parking ticket, and the other was dropped. Equity work that's occurring in District 65, and District 202, and now the city with the creation of an equity and empowerment coordinator position focuses on helping people to be more aware of their stereotypes and biases. Furthering stereotypes steps this work backwards. And lastly, Evanston Now refers to human beings as illegal. When a reader pointed that out, that the term was not aligned with the city effort, the response was that it was defended, and the writer used the term... The writer defended his use of the term and wrote that anything else is simply sanitized language, propaganda, and euphemisms. The city has made important strides to protect and publicly value Evanston residents who do not have documentation through the creation of the welcoming city ordinance. I don't understand why you would spend tax dollars on a source that dehumanizes these same residents. So on behalf of hundreds of residents who have signed a petition asking the same, I ask that you not spend tax dollars on this site.
Thank you. Next is Stephanie.
My name is Stephanie Teterich. It's a little bit intimidating to see that. I just want to follow up on Heather Sweeney's previous comments about advertising and spending tax... City tax dollars on Evanston Now advertising. It seems to me, and I want to sort of expand the conversation a little bit, because I think this is relevant in a lot of arenas besides just this immediate example. It seems like we have two criteria primarily upon which to make a judgment about spending money in commercial publications... Public money in commercial publications. One argument that comes up a lot in defense of doing such... Making such spending is that it's a free speech issue. And the second one... The second criteria I think we should be taking into account is how should the city spend taxpayer money by asking the question, "Who benefits?" With regard to the first question, it being a free speech issue, I think a lot of times fear of censorship or concerns about censorship get sort of translated into issues of free speech. So of course, we're all in favor of free speech, right? But if we really look at it in terms of censorship, maybe the question gets tilted a little bit differently. What if we replace this issue of free speech with censorship? So when you say not advertising in Evanston Now is a question of censorship, you have to ask yourself, "Is it really censorship?" People get excited when you say the city is squelching free speech by not advertising in Evanston Now, but really, you have to ask the question, "Is the city really censoring Evanston Now by not advertising there?" I would ask how not spending public taxpayer money to place ads in a commercial publication is not actually censorship. The freedom to speak freely still prevails. Tax dollars should benefit all or as many citizens as possible, and if what is being funded does more than... More harm than good, then the city really needs to rethink its priorities. Lending taxpayer money to fund a racist discourse is not actually in the benefit of all residents. It seems when it comes to spending taxpayer money, which is the money paid by all the people of the city, for the people of the city, we need to ask who benefits from this spending and who could be harmed in the process. At this moment, we are spending not only money, but devoting a lot of airtime fretting over the free speech... So-called free speech rights of one individual and one commercial publication, rather than discussing the harm that the speech levels against a large and very important population of the city. And if you're having trouble wrapping your head around this, maybe it would help to ask, "What if it were women? What if it were women being harassed and disparaged in the pages of Evanston Now in the same way? What if the city threw up its hands and said, 'Well, we see that women are being degraded and devalued in this commercial publication, but it's a free speech issue. We can't really do anything, so we'll keep directing our advertising dollars there.'" If it's truly a free speech issue, then I think you need to ask, "Whose speech are you promoting and putting your money behind? And whose speech... Whose presence in this debate are you taking... Talking over and silencing?"
I do need you to wrap up.
What about their speech? What about those of us to whom EvanstonNow.com doesn't speak but gives... Goes out of its way to harm? What about standing up for us? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lisa Applegate, and then Madeline Ducray.
My name is Lisa Applegate. I've been a journalist for 20 years. More than half of that has been at a local, community-focused newspaper, and my notes just disappeared. Hold on. There's no question in my mind that the strength of community discourse and participation is dependent upon a balanced and dedicated media. Unlike a growing number of communities nationwide, Evanston is fortunate to have several outlets for news, including Evanston Now. Many people rely on Evanston Now's online coverage of city meetings, news, and events, which is why I believe it's critical for the city council to establish and clarify its expectations... Excuse me. For media that is balanced and fair. Now, I know that no writer, editor, or media outlet can honestly claim to be entirely free from bias. What I do know is that it is our obligation... Excuse me. Obligation as journalists and as citizens to strive to identify and remove bias from our reporting whenever possible. When I see headlines that refer to people as illegals or demean a serious meeting about policing by using subjective terms like "near meltdowns," it is clear that the bias of Evanston Now's writers has not been checked. I was confused and then infuriated to read about the headline about Devon Reed saying that he was no stranger to arrest. Whether this was lazy or intentionally misleading, such headlines can permanently damage reputations. In a time when we skim news all day long, headlines are even more critical for conveying accurate information. I urge the city council and the city of Evanston to think seriously about whether it wants to dedicate advertising funds to Evanston Now. I urge you to be critical media consumers. Find out what Evanston Now's policy is regarding deleting or allowing reader comments. Ask how Evanston Now is edited. Explore whether the staff reflects a diverse range of perspectives and backgrounds. It would be a shame for the city to devote its efforts and finances toward improving equity and unity while at the same time dedicating funds to a media outlet that appears to be unwilling or unable to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Madeline.
Madeline Ducray here. I'd like to start off by saying, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. First of all, I want to apologize publicly to the city law department for publicly saying that I did not hear from anyone at the city. When I wrote to several people here at the local government, the law department did email me on February 23rd. I expected a call or a letter. Forgive me, I'm not highly technical, and my children did not want to teach me again how to pull up the back emails. I have boo-ku. Anyway, having said that, I apologize publicly. I also want to apologize to my mayor... I also want to apologize to my mayor and her secretary, and I want to thank you for getting in touch with me and talking to me. But I still would like to know, and I'm writing you another letter, because I want to find out about the election thing that's going on. I want to know if it's ethical or not. And I want the Board of Ethics to tell me and the resident of Evanston that. I think they're supposed to be opening for, opening for letters or what have you on March 21st or thereafter. I want to know, are these allegations true or false? I'll leave that alone for now. I need my alderman, Delores Holmes, and other aldermen on this council to explain to me and the residents here in Evanston, how do you distinguish or how do you separate who you will stop, who you will profile here in Evanston? The police is profiling, stopping, and frisking Americans here in Evanston and in America. Again, I ask you, how do you separate these people that you are protecting or whatever term you may use? How do you distinguish criminals from another country when you don't stop and you don't profile, you don't frisk them, and you frisk other people here in America, whether they poor whites or poor blacks or colored people? How do you distinguish that? How do you separate that? Please, I need your answer. And I'm not just talking about Mexicans, okay? Correct me if I'm wrong, but I have a distinct feeling that you're only talking about Mexicans, and it's not true. Not only Mexicans are here, illegal, undocumented here in America. This is one of the reasons why I say I don't like this, because you're singling in on certain people and you pitting, pitting us against each other, and I don't like that. It's not fair. Tell me the difference, or is there a difference? Is there any discrimination here? Can anyone kind of tell me if there's any discrimination here between these folks, that folks, when you're stopping, profiling, and frisking?
Madeline, I do need you to wrap up.
Thank you very much, mayor. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. That concludes Citizen Comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ask your approval of the meeting minutes from February 27th. Administration Public Works Committee met this evening, and approval is needed for the The March 14 bills, $3,300.
Please remove A2, sorry.
Oh, right. Removing that from the consent agenda.
Correct.
And we'll deal with that later. I'm sorry. The fourth quarter financial report for fiscal year 2016 was presented to us this evening. I'm going to ask that we accept that and place it on file. We're being asked to approve the purchase of 38 self-contained breathing apparatus from municipal emergency services. The cost of the purchases is $243,000, and the funding will come in part from a grant competition through which the fire department won an award of $221,091 from the Department of Homeland Security Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program. Evanston is responsible for 10% of that amount, $22,199 under the terms of the grant. That is for action tonight. Professional service agreement is to be approved. That is an agreement with Conlee Academy for Martial Arts Instruction at the Levy Center. The staff projects a total of 2017 expenditure payments to Conlee's Academy, $32,400, with revenues of $54,000 based on anticipated participation for action. Also for action, we're being asked to approve a single-source purchase of original equipment manufacturer OEM parts and services with Gulf Mill Ford in the amount of $86,500 through March of 2018. A 30% discount off list price for parts is being offered. Your approval is being requested to authorize the manager to authorize a one-year renewal for tire repair and recap services in the amount of $24,672 with Wentworth Fire Services. Approval is also requested for the manager to amend an existing engineering services contract for Phase 3 of the Fountain Square renovation project with Christopher Burke Engineering in the amount of $345,634.01. This will modify an existing agreement amount to $747,531.89. It will extend the contract deadline to June 30, 2018. Funding is available from multiple funds. No other project will be deferred as a result of the use of Sheridan Chicago Avenue Cost Savings. You're being asked to authorize the city manager to execute a contract for Fountain Square renovation project with Copen Haver Construction in the amount of $5,900,266.70. Funding is available from multiple funds as identified in the 2017 Capital Improvement Plan. That is for action tonight. The city manager, we're requesting the city manager execute a contract for the 2017 Green Bay Road Landscape Maintenance Contract to the low bidder Landscape Concepts Management, Inc., in the amount of $24,966.90. Approval is being requested for a contract with Schroeder &amp; Schroeder for the 50/50 sidewalk replacement project in the amount of $208,900. You're being asked to authorize the city manager to execute a one-year contract extension for pavement patching with J.A. Johnson Paving Company in the amount of $600,000. A sole-source purchase of concrete from Ozinga Ready Mix Concrete is for action tonight. It's a one-year, single-source contract, as I said, for the purchase of flowable fill with Ozinga Ready Mix in the amount of $42,100. City manager is, we're requesting approval of the city manager to execute another contract for the 2017 CIPP Sewer Rehab Contract A in the amount of $210,088 with Her Construction. That is for action.
Please remove 313, too.
This is going to be removed from the consent agenda. A 3.13, the Howard Street Architectural Services. A 314 is Howard Street Corridor Improvement Project Engineering Services with Christopher B. Burke Engineering. City manager needs to execute a contract to provide Phase 1 engineering services in the amount of $289,820. This is for action tonight. A 3.15 is for action.
Would you remove that, please?
And to place on file, yes. This has to do with Northwestern University payments. A 4 stays on or comes off?
Stays on.
Stays on, okay. Resolution 23R17, this is for action tonight, affirms the city of Evanston's commitment to reimburse District 65 and District 202 their respective shares of Northwestern University's payment in lieu of taxes. This is Resolution 23R17. Okay, A 5. Resolution 24R17 authorizes the city manager to sign an Illinois Department of Transportation resolution to, for improvement of various Evanston streets. This will allow the use of motor fuel tax funds in the amount of $1,400,000 for street resurfacing. This is an annual requirement for action tonight. We're recommending that the city.
Please remove A6.
Okay. This is A6, the lease for the theater. A7 is Ordinance 9017. It increases the number of Class D liquor licenses for Red Hot Chili Pepper Restaurant to 59, and Red Hot Chili Peppers Restaurant is at 500 Davis Street, Unit 102. The ordinance was introduced at the February 27th meeting. It is for action tonight. Also for action tonight is Ordinance 10017, and increases the number of Class W liquor licenses for Little Beans Cafe. It increases the number of W licenses to two. Little Beans is at 430 Asbury Avenue. Human Services Committee met earlier in the month and recommends Resolution 15R17, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with the Evanston Animal Shelter Association to serve as the city's volunteer animal organization. For action. Resolution 16R17 authorizes the city manager to negotiate and execute a grant agreement with the shelter associate to fund operations at the Evanston Animal Shelter. The total cost of this agreement would be $65,000 per year, and the agreement would run for a period of two years, June 1, 2017 to May 31, 2019. For action tonight. Resolution 25R16 is for action. This designates a portion of Foster Street between Hartree Avenue and Emerson Street with the honorary street name sign Reverend Zali Webb Way. Economic Development Committee has met and recommends the following. Approval of financial assistance through the storefront modernization program to the owners of Gross Point Plaza Shopping Center at 2504 to 2510 Gross Point Road in an amount not to exceed $16,500 for facade renovation, including accessibility improvements and installation of new windows and doors. Another storefront modernization for Lake City Cleaners. Economic Development Committee recommends approval of financial assistance through the storefront modernization program to Lake City Cleaners at 600 Oakton Street in an amount not to exceed $10,648 for the installation of an RPZ backflow prevention device and water pressure booster pump within the building's plumbing system in order to bring it into compliance with plumbing code requirements. 03 is storefront modernization program application for Red Hot Chili Peppers Restaurant at 500 Davis Street in an amount not to exceed $10,700 for the facade renovations, including the addition of a revolving door, relocation of an accessible entrance, and installation of new windows and signage. Also for, for approval is an Economic Development Committee recommendation for storefront modernization program for Good2Go Jamaican's new location at 7-Eleven Howard Street in an amount not to exceed $50,000 for renovations, including plumbing, electrical, HVAC, concrete work, masonry work, painting, drywall, and demolition. This is for action tonight. Also for action tonight is another committee recommendation for approval of Resolution 22R17 for a community development block grant loan in the amount of $25,000 to Good2Go Jamaican Cuisine to purchase equipment needed for their new location at 7-Eleven Howard Street. Also for approval. Madam Mayor, that concludes the consent agenda, and I move approval.
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
8-0.
Eight to nothing, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Miller, I believe you're subbing for Alderman Braithwaite.
Sure. So move approval of item A2. This is the city of Evanston bills through March 14, 2017, the amount of $3,315,207.85.
Is there a second?
Alderman Rainey, do you want to speak to this?
You have to amend it.
Oh, no, no, I'm just gonna, I want to have, I don't want to amend it. I'm just, what I would, I want to pull it off to vote against, in the public information line, 1510, against the payment for a street cleaning reminder ad for Evanston Now. I'll be voting against that for a variety of reasons that many speakers brought forth tonight, and I appreciate Alderman Rainey making the referral to the Rules Committee to talk about how we're going to be doing advertising and setting some standards for that. So did you have a specific date in mind that you want to do the, have a Rules Committee meeting?
Next one.
Next one, so it would be the first Monday of April? We don't have a standing one anymore.
It's up to the chair. Alderman Wilson's the chair. I think the rule is to call the chair at this point.
We're doubling it up on council meetings, right? That's what we've been doing.
We've done a variety of things.
I'm sorry, Alderman Wilson, are you?
I'm just, just as a reminder that we're not having a human services meeting on the April meeting.
Right. Until the 10th, possibly?
So.
It's right before election.
Right. I'm just saying, I just wanted to remind, because we're not having.
That would be easy for me, but, yeah, so, but I'm not going to.
Very easy for me.
We've got a regularly scheduled meeting on the 10th.
We do.
Okay. Include that on the agenda for the 10th, then?
So, so we would have Administration Public Works playing in Development Rules and then the Council.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. Agreeable?
Mm-hmm. No, it's the 10th.
Okay, seeing no, Alderman Fisk?
Yes, I had a question. The ad, Mr. City Manager, the ad was placed and ran? Is that correct?
That's correct. I, I think we usually get a period of time, we don't do contracts. I think there's been some discussion about contracts. We don't do contracts. We place an ad, the street sweeping ad is continuing. I'm not quite sure when it's set to be finished, but shortly, I would imagine, in the next week or two.
Okay.
Mr. Smith's here, he may know off the top of his head, but, okay.
Okay. I'm concerned about what the, what the people at Citizen Comment had to say, and, but I do think we need to pay for whatever we've ordered and what has been provided. And I do support going to the Rules Committee and having a further discussion about this at the Rules Committee.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
All right. So are we breaking this into two components, all of the bills except for that one, or? It's not clear how we're voting on that.
I just want to record my opposition to that one single item, and I would welcome anyone else doing the same, but, you know, I don't want to break it into two separate items in that sense.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll share an observation, and I've communicated with some of the speakers and other people who aren't here tonight, but it's important to have a conversation. So we need to talk about the issue as a whole, because it's certainly not limited to one particular provider of journalistic services. I've looked at other newspapers. Evanston Review has absolutely horrifying comments. Some people might think that they're worse than the ones that have been brought up. So the, the issue needs a discussion, but I don't know that it's necessarily fair to target or single out one particular publication. When this, this issue, the anonymous comments, the hateful rhetoric, it goes well beyond just one particular publication. This is kind of a, something that's just become pervasive in our community and our society. So it's an important conversation to have, so I look forward to having that and how we can effectively, you know, raise it and address it in what we choose to do.
Thank you. So we have a motion to. So, we have a motion to pass the bills. And then it's all right with you, Alderman Miller?
Yeah, I would just--
You just vote no on it?
Right. So, if the Clerk could record me as voting no on the payment terms now--
I think we can manage that.
Right, just making sure of that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to pass the City of Evanston Bills. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Win. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Eight to nothing, all right, no, seven to one.
No, he said aye.
He said aye.
He said aye.
And the rest of it, I just want specifically recorded no on that one specific item. The rest of the bills, I want approved.
So, yes to the bills, but no to?
That item.
Which item?
Evanston now.
Evanston. It's 115 something.
No to?
Got it?
Evanston now.
All right, moving right along. Alderman Miller.
So, Item A6 is Ordinance 23-0-17, the lease of city-owned property located at 721 723 Howard Street to Teo Obique, and rent is proposed at $3,500 per month, $42,000 annual for the first three years.
Second.
After there's any discussion of it.
It's been moved and seconded. I don't see any lights for discussion.
April A313.
All right, City Clerk, can you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
No.
I'm sorry, I actually, I took that out of order as well. I apologize. Move approval of Item A3-13, which was the one before this, I'm sorry, the Howard Street Theater. So, that was passed, but I'm sorry, I skipped a page. Howard Street Theater Architectural Services Contract with Ross Barney Architects.
No, no, you took it off, you took it off the agenda.
Which one?
Right, right.
I took it off the agenda.
Right, 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 no, I'm sorry. I just, there's two that I just, I skipped the page. I'm just going out of order. I apologize.
But we just, we have to vote on this, because I took it off the agenda, you asked it to be taken off.
Right, right.
So, we have to finish, yes, to record it.
Okay, we were voting on A313.
No, we voted on A6. I just missed, and you said next, the next one is A313, which I unfortunately took out of order. We voted on A6, and A6 passed. We haven't voted on--
No, no, we just voted on it just a second. We were doing, because we took it off.
Right, right.
We did A2, and then A313 was next.
And we missed that. No, no, I read A6, so I'm just, just to be clear, I'm sorry, I skipped A313. So, the lease, I just said the lease was the motion I made, that was, just to be clear, I made a mistake and skipped 313 and A315. What we just approved was A6.
So, we've approved A6, and we're now going to A313.
Going back, because I'm sorry, I just, I flipped the page wrong.
It's okay, we can, we can fix this.
Right. So, move approval of A313.
Can we slow down till the City Clerk gets caught up here?
Okay.
Just a second. All right, we're on A313, this one.
Right. So, A6 is a no.
Yeah, A6 passed.
A6 is a pass.
Seven to one.
Okay, that's A6.
All right, we're now on A313.
So, this is not the lease, this is the contract with Ross Barney Architects.
We're gonna get it.
Okay. In the amount of $150,455 for architectural services for the Howard Street Theater.
Second.
Okay, you ready?
Yes.
All right, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
On A313, so we're all.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
No.
Seven one.
The motion passes seven to one.
So, Item A315 is a report regarding Northwestern University's voluntary annual payments referenced in its January 31, 2017 letter to the city.
Second.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first thing I want to say is thank you to our Law Department, who did extraordinary work digging up years of papers on this, and I think we're moving ahead absolutely in the right direction. I had two questions for Corporation Council. The first is that the payments are not specifically stated to be in perpetuity, and I think that was one of the points that we were after. The second one is, in going through the materials, I did not see anywhere that the city council ever was consulted or released this property from the Research Park original plan, and I'm concerned, because it seems to me that there should have been some action on the council on that. So, I guess I would ask Corporation Council just to clarify those two things for me.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and City Clerk Green Grant for our Corporation Council. With respect to the first issue that Alderman Fisk raised, that relates to a meeting that I had with my counterpart at Northwestern, the General Counsel over there, wherein we discussed a number of these precise issues, specifically speaking to the need to have a written memorialization between the university and the city, speaking to issues about property tax payments, payments in lieu of taxes, or voluntary contributions, as might also be called, and fixing a definite set of understandings, both respect to the timing of the payment, the amount of the payment, and the term of the payment. So, based upon the productive conversations that I had with my counterpart, I will certainly proceed with that following direction, that the city definitely wants voluntary payments to be in perpetuity, run with the land, and I think that based upon the productive and cordial dialogue that I had last week, that a lot of that is on the table, and I will certainly keep the council fully informed. This process will necessitate some continuing dialogue with the council and returning to the council for review and execution of that paperwork. With respect to the second question, as to where 1840 Oak and the city council were in 2000, I really cannot say with any specificity. Based upon my review of the documents, there is no hard, easily verifiable paper trail that specifically shows when 1840 Oak and the release that was recorded with Cook County Recorder of Deeds, how that, if it ever indeed did come before council. So, unfortunately, I've not been able to find that. I will obviously continue to look for something like that if I can find it. What I can say on the record, Alderman Fisk, is that by operation of Resolution 46R06, a resolution in 2006, the city consented to the dissolution of the Northwestern Evanston Research Park and the entity that ran the park called Newark, and one of the recitals in there spoke to the consents of the city with respect to land acquired or otherwise disposed of. That consent was secured from the city, whatever the disposition was. So, that's the only operative resolution I've been able to find so far. I will continue to look. I think it's definitely appropriate, and I think that my counterparts over at Northwestern share the common desire that it's necessary to have a document, a series of documents that accurately memorializes all of these matters, not only for 1840, but all other subject properties, and that those matters also be properly recorded at the Recorder of Deeds, and all of that will require council review and action, and we will continue on an ongoing basis to do that.
Thank you very much. If I may, just one more second, Madam Mayor. I think having good record-keeping like this is really essential, again, to promoting a good business relationship with the university. We all have a good personal relationship with the university, but a good business relationship is part of being a good neighbor, too. So, thank you to everyone, including the university, for sitting down with us on this.
Thank you. Are we then ready to vote? All right.
Is that what you just said?
Rodney, are you?
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right, that's on?
A315.
A315, Report Regarding Northwestern University's Voluntary Annual Payments, referenced in its January 31, 2017 letter to the city. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Eight zero.
Eight to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Miller, does that conclude your?
That concludes it.
And Human Services and Economic Development, all passed. Alderman Wilson.
A few residents are wondering about the snow, so could we get the city manager to double back? And we're in street cleaning timeframe, so could you just talk a little bit about what happens if we have, you know, eight inches of snow tonight, which, heaven forbid, but a number of residents are just concerned? Would there be a snow emergency? How would that work with the parking?
We announced earlier, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Alderman Wilson, we announced earlier today that street sweeping rules were suspended through the 15th through Wednesday. At this point, we don't know what snow will get tonight. Forecasts are anywhere from a trace to seven inches, and so I really, it depends how this lake effect ban hits, so there will be no, no street sweeping, at least through Wednesday. We are, there is no snow emergency or snow route parking ban in effect for this evening. We will make a determination tomorrow afternoon what bans might be necessary, depending on the amount of snow.
Okay, and did the front row get all that? Okay, thanks, guys.
All right, I believe we're at call of the wards. Alderman Fisk.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Win.
Yes, I invite all Third Ward residents to come and join me for a cup of coffee this Thursday morning at Beagle Art from 7:00 to 10:00.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson. Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
I invite all Fifth Ward residents and anyone else who wants to join us for the regular Fifth Ward meeting on this Thursday at 7:00 PM at Fleetwood.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham.
Our report, thank you.
You, Alderman Revelle.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to mention the kickoff meeting for the Evanston Community Habitat Project that's taking place this Wednesday, March 15, 7:00 PM, in the parasol room on the fourth floor upstairs. As you may recall, the city was awarded a $100,000 grant recently to create an enhanced migratory bird habitat along the North Shore Channel. That's going to be along where the Arboretum is, and then four nearby neighborhood parks. And so, we invite everybody to come to this meeting, learn more about the project and how people can get involved.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Eighth Ward meeting tomorrow night at the Levy Center, 7:00. New information regarding James Park lawsuit and lots of other information.
Thank you. Alderman Miller.
Our report.
Thank you. There a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.